We would call them in order and pass it to eleven time to do local and share assignments.
Let's remember, Barbara.
Barbara.
Let's remember Garcia.
Here.
Let's remember Raj.
Here.
Let's remember Smith.
Here.
May I also?
Here.
And information on participating in this meeting and providing public comments, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on this meeting agenda, which is online at monterey dot com. And anyone who's here with us in person, if you'd like to attend the right there on the table in front. Um, remote commenters will be muted until there's your friends speak and the sound will be found on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the sound has to act or be overlaid. In-person attendees, please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting. And in addition, please keep mindful that this technology we're using for our meeting is very sensitive and it picks up small sounds and whispers, which then become part of the public broadcast and the YouTube recording. So, uh, thank you for participating in your city government.
Perfect. And I just want to emphasize and point that of a time to speak, um, the sound in the room, uh, that I will pick it up very easily and will turn the camera towards you. So just ask to keep the, the, the sound of the room down to a minimum, if possible. So try to have the camera facing the right space and have the audio kind of pick up the, the right voices at the right time. Um, all right, with that, we have one public appearance item today. Number one, conduct a workshop to provide feedback on twenty twenty five city staff work program, establish adopted council priorities and adopt its value members. We're now asking about first staff.
Yes, thank you, so here in the council, um, let me start differently, uh, than you might expect. So today was Chinese lunar and, um, I'm gonna have to show them, uh, to our community of Asian elders who are celebrating the lunar year, uh, that starts today with the year of this name. And, uh, also we send our residents, uh, uh, demographically categorized as Asian. So it's a bit holiday for some of them. We have a new audience, actually two young children who are appropriately pressed in bed, uh, to, to, uh, so I don't know. Say a quick shout out to you too. Thank you. And what we want to do today is, uh, this, uh, whole workshop that will allow you, the council, to, uh, uh, discuss, uh, what are your priorities, uh, based on, on your work program that we introduced to you or reintroduced to you, um, a week ago. As you know, kind of going over the work from program twice a year and providing you with updates and you provide us also and the community with input, what is important. Um, and, uh, our program is, is only as good as, um, as the situation allows us to work with it. Um, uh, the plan, this is only as good as long as you can exercise it. Um, and, uh, the plan is nothing worth, nothing worth anymore when you get punched in the face, as much as you say. So the, the point here is, um, four weeks ago, we had no idea of, uh, how we would urgently discuss wildfire and how would we discuss a response to, um, to a situation like that. It was basically, um, brought onto us through, uh, the events in Los Angeles. And so whatever we have planned for, for certain, uh, certain months, whatever the priorities are, they constantly need to be reshuffled and that applies to many of the other, uh, work programs and priorities that the council sets over the years. Um, there's always something that, uh, requires the council and the community, uh, to take, uh, a stand or to, to, uh, come up with, uh, legislative solutions. And so, uh, tonight, uh, what we ask, uh, to, from the council is to, uh, work with, uh, with yourself, work with amongst yourself and help that staff to, uh, identify what are your priorities. And we have some exercises prepared where we basically, uh, want to, uh, uh, learn what do you think is important. And what we also hope to get all, uh, today is, um, uh, the, um, the general understanding where you want to allocate your resources because as we go into the fiscal year, uh, development, um, for H Y twenty five, twenty six, we also need to know, uh, where does the council see right now some of those priorities. This whole thing, of course, for the budget goes through a separate process for the other input opportunities for the community. But going forward, um, uh, it will help us also to strategize internally when we set priorities. If it's funding source, we hope for that as well. Until then, uh, I will hand it over to, um, uh, our assistant city manager. He will be kind of the master of ceremonies today and will guide us through, through the program. I think we started with, um, public comments. Uh, so I, I, I misspoke, our council just did, but we made from, um, I think that's why I'm so, uh, sad. Is that I, I, I.
As I got that data, do you? Okay. Well, we, as the city manager, we'll start with public comments. So this is for, uh, regarding staff work plan, the accountable priorities. So we'll, uh, go ahead and open it up and, um, what we'll do is hard to, we will go to see the folks online. We'll ask the folks on Zoom to use the raise hand function. It'll give you a second to navigate, uh, tapping that button. And, and in the meantime, I'll check in with folks in the room. Um, for those that wish to speak on public comment, um, we'll ask them to step up to the podium and line up. Um, podium, if you want to remain seated, uh, while others are speaking, you can identify yourself by raising your hand. Seems like you're the only one, so you can just step right up. Anybody else in the room want to speak on these two? Okay. So we'll go ahead and cut it off for folks in the room. I'll do a countdown, folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have two folks on team, so we'll go ahead and start from the chamber and then give everybody three minutes.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, City Council member, uh, city manager. I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to bring up again the problem of secondhand smoke where I live. I mean, it's a serious problem. I've already distributed, I think, um, the letter I sent to everybody that includes a petition that was signed by many of my neighbors. And I want to point out that everybody who signed this petition is a resident of the condominium where I live at five hundred Glenwood Circle. I didn't want the street to ask basically to sign. So everybody who signed has been affected or is affected now by the problem of secondhand smoking infiltration. This building was originally built as an apartment building back in sixty eight or something like that. And later was sold, the units were sold individually. So now it's a condominium, but built as an apartment building, we share, they heard that. And that creates a, a terrible situation. We share their retreat. And for people who are still not smoking indoors, they, they claim that because they live in their own condominium, they, uh, can do whatever they want. However, there are many examples, and I have attached a list of, um, some cities in California municipalities that have banned indoor smoking in multi-unit residences, including condominiums, uh, condominium units. So I'm asking again, the, the city council, please to, um, take this into account because many of us who are in this situation, um, you'll have all the information you need in, uh, your hands. I have also included the Pacific Grove Municipal Code Regulations on smoking indoors, which include prohibition of smoking in existing or new units of multi-unit residences. Here is all the wording you need. Just change the code numbers to Monterey. I'm saving you all the drafting. Um, so, um, what I have to say is please take into account, I'm an eighty-year-old, um, senior who lives in this place and I get waking up in the middle of the night when my bedroom gets filled with infiltrated secondhand smoke. It's very toxic. Also, the same person also smokes cannabis. I want to make clear that I voted to legalize recreational use of cannabis in California. I don't care what people do with their own lives, but I do care what they do with my life. So they can smoke the cannabis away from how it affects me, uh, the tobacco away from what it affects me. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ursula Gallo Shoddy. Says save for the record here, Ursula Gallo Shoddy. And I, I am a homeowner in Monterey. I represent La Playa Town Home, it's a sixty-unit condominium complex located on La Playa Street, adjacent to Del Monte Beach. First, I want to thank all of you for all the work that you do. Um, the work plan is extensive and ambitious. And as a member of the community, I really appreciate all the work that you do. So thank you. We in Parkland are significantly interested in the update of the City of Monterey's local coastal program, which is identified in the city staff work program, value driver number two, protect and preserve our natural environment by addressing climate change through ecologically responsible and pragmatic solutions. Protect our natural environment for future generations, page seventeen in the packet that you have. We are concerned about the effect of sea level rise, storm damage and kink ties on the health and future of Del Monte Beach, specifically the part of the beach between the harbor and the national, um, and the National Park Service beach. We have observed that there's been significant erosion of Del Monte Beach and dune loss over the past five to ten years. The current land use program for Del Monte Beach that was, um, done in twenty oh three does not specifically address current issues that are affecting a portion of Del Monte Beach between the naval property and harbor. I would urge you to not to rely on the programs or proposals or scientific data from forty-two years ago, thirty-three years ago, twenty-two years ago, or nine years ago, but to conduct a formal scientific study in the current situation and the predicted long range effects of nature on this portion of Del Monte Beach. The prior documents contain useful information, some excellent recommendations for action. Up-to-date information would allow for a clear action plan for habitat preservation, dune restoration and coastal resiliency. We encourage the use of the funds from the California Coastal Commission to grant to evaluate Del Monte Beach. We would look forward to working with you on this if there's any way that we could be helpful as a community of sixty homeowners. So thank you very much for your attention to this.
Thank you. Right, and with that, we will go to our two callers on Zoom.
What's going on, Mari?
Yes. Can you see me? Visible.
We can hear you.
Okay. So I'm Mary Lynch Dummler, and I've been a resident of unincorporated rural Monterey County since nineteen eighty-one, have lived at the same address. My son and daughter born and raised here. So I am, um, addressing the council today specifically related to bicycling issues and active transportation. Uh, bicycling has been my volunteer work, uh, putting in well over twenty-two thousand hours over the past fifteen years for our whole county's benefit. But my, my bulk of my hours, volunteer hours, go to benefit the city of Monterey, which is the city nearest to me and is sort of my adopted city. So in addition to, like most of you, having volunteered in other ways for the city over the years, storm drains to adobes to whatever, uh, bicycling advocacy has been my focus the last fifteen years. So among the things that I do is I represent our county on the California Bicycle Coalition's Policy Advisory Council, statewide council. One of the things we're addressing, uh, these days, which is an issue in City of Monterey, is the impact of the increased number of e-bike riders. So, um, I would really love to have any of you contact me with questions. BikeMonterey.org has my phone number. I very much welcome phone calls, happy to meet with any council members or members of the public who'd like to talk about these issues. Um, one of the things I'd like most of all to emphasize is the need for education. Sometimes some of the issues, as you'll see on the website, if you go to the BikeMonterey.org and look at resources slash Los Recursos section, you'll see a variety of resources, including about e-bikes and just general bike law and safety and riding skills information. And one of the things that comes up lately is you'll see the, uh, groups of youth who are doing rideouts. So I have, uh, certainly made an effort to try to address those issues. But a lot of times it's not behavioral, uh, but it's actually lack of education, just ignorance about what the bike laws are. This is, of course, complicated in our county by the number of visitors we have. So they're coming from all over with different laws all over the state, so, and country and beyond. So I would love to, um, have any of you contact me. I would really like, uh, because bicycling touches on many of the values areas of the city, um, I would love to have you contact me, uh, if the city might be interested this year in having me start to work for them as a person who helps to educate the public directly. I've done this on my own, but I think it's maybe time for the city to take a more active role in, in the work that I'm doing and make it possible to expand on this to address the issue of e-bikes and more. Um, on a statewide level and locally too, I think it's important to address illegal e-motocycles, which.
If you could just finish up that thought and then, um, your timer has expired.
Um, Mary.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, trying to figure this technology. I'm gonna go to the next Zoom caller.
Yeah, this is the last speaker. I did want to know if someone right from far after your call, so apologies that we didn't get that on. But you're from the South Shore.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm not sure if there's a timer, but it's not on the screen and I couldn't understand what Fomentine just said. Um, the sound on this is not ideal at all. But, um, I want to start out by thanking, um, staff for everything that they do. I want to give a shout out to the fire chief and MPD, as well as our forester and parks people that attended our neighborhood meeting this weekend. It was, um, our annual meeting for Laguna Grande residents. And they came out and spoke to everybody that attended, including some people from our adjacent neighborhoods, about safety and evacuations and different things. And, you know, they do this on their own time, which is really commendable and much appreciated by us. Um, I also want to specifically, um, thank the housing staff for all the work that they did, um, on all the renter policies, conversations and the assistance program. I know that it's been very, very time consuming and cumbersome and, um, you're, you usually are not getting a lot of love from anybody other than the renters. So they can't be very vocal, but I can tell you that it's all very much appreciated. And, um, I'm hoping that your jobs don't get harder than they already are with some of the policies, oh my God, some of the policies that are already taking place that are trickling down, um, from DC. So I'm sure this meeting is going to be very interesting. And, um, for practical reasons, I hope that you guys can achieve whatever it is that you hope, um, to plan for today by, you know, the next couple of years without knowing what's going to be coming down and what cuts we can expect, um, from the federal government. So good luck and thanks to all of you for doing this and taking the effort, putting in the effort to take so much public comment. And, you know, you guys do a lot of outreach more than ever before. And whoever complains about lack of that from the city, it's really on them for not paying attention and not following if they're really interested. So thanks and good afternoon.
Hope you're okay over there. Um, I, I actually want to allow, um, additional folks. So I'm gonna open it up one more time and I'm only doing this because I know that this is a earlier than normal meeting, this is an evening meeting. I know people are trying to transition from getting off of work. So I'm gonna open up public comment one more time. So if anybody on Zoom wants to speak for general public comment on this item, go ahead and raise your hand with the Zoom function. Um, I'll check again in the room if there's anybody that wants to speak for public comments. Does we have one in the room? Anybody else? All right. So we're just limited to the one in the room and I'll do a countdown, folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have the one on Zoom. So we'll go ahead and start, uh, in the room.
You have a microphone?
Your voice.
All right. Well, um, great to see everybody here. Council member Raj is the newest one and everybody else who's here as well as all that are in that audience. Uh, I'm surprised to see it's so full. My name's Lysanne Sani. We own a business in downtown Monterey, very active and involved in the community. Um, and, uh, I appreciate seeing this effort. And I don't exactly know what you're doing today. I see urgent, not urgent, very important. So definitely doing some SWOT analysis and looking at things like that. Uh, is this recorded in? Oh, it is. Okay, good. And I just heard Esther, the last speaker, say that it was hard to hear. And I know that technology improvements and really investing, especially when you have four o'clock meetings, I think is really important or really meetings at any time of day ultimately. And I've been a public servant and I was very much an advocate for greater technology in my role, as even some of the council members know, in this room. So, uh, hopefully that can be resolved and we look forward to working with everybody. I think there's desires and I, again, I know that there's some ideas and concepts, but I see the, the SWOT analysis up there. I really look forward to hearing, you know, great, um, ideas, discussion, opportunities, because there certainly are opportunities for growth as well as, uh, some improvements and some challenges ultimately. So hopefully we can, you know, and I look forward to just seeing what comes. So thank you for letting me speak as well. And again, the week of AT&T week, kind of hard for a lot of business people to get here. And it's Wednesday of AT&T week. Downtown is actually busy. Downtown is actually busy. There's things going on. I know the police have already responded to items on Alvarado three times today and I just know that because I've been at my business for the last two and a half hours. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. All right, so go to the public commenter, Mike.
So, please, busy, Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. Good to finally be back in 2025. Thank you for hosting this meeting. I just had a few comments. You know, we've seen an uptick in a lot of homeless activity in downtown area. I guess one of my questions to everybody was going to be, is there going to be a new policy? My recommendation would be to make citizen life permanent. I believe Watsonville and Santa Cruz have changed their policy and we see a lot of new individuals here, some of whom are very, very aggressive. So, my humble request to everybody is that we get more of a police presence, especially on the weekends. There, we've had a lot of challenges, my customers, my employees, some of whom have to be walk their car as early as seven-thirty in the evening. So, would really appreciate the council considering, you know, encouraging greater police presence in the area. Also, since a couple of years ago, I think some folks had brought up the idea of having downtown Alvarado Street be pedestrian-only street. Wanted to encourage you to research that, see if it's possible, see if there's an appetite in the community for that. I think that would be great just for downtown businesses in general. And once again, my request is, you know, if we can have better policies for the homeless individuals that hang out here. People do not feel very safe, especially after dark. And we've had multiple customers complain to us about that, some of whom only come to us, you know, in the afternoon. But, you know, our neighboring cities like Carmel, PG, Seaside, even, you know, as far as Watsonville have changed their homeless policies and I would encourage you to look at what they're doing that is working for them because we, in downtown specifically, have to encounter those situations very, very often. And my request is that something gets done about that. With that, I thank you again for your time and thank you for listening to me.
We'll just go to the public comment and then I'll pass it back to staff for the activity.
Great, thank you so much, council. We're delighted to have all of you here in the National Chief College Center, both our longtime city facilities and thanks to our senior senator and fully staffed and hosted. Our game plan today, we budgeted the next roughly two and a half hours to go through a few exercises. The first one is to brainstorm with all of you what you all believe are the biggest accomplishments of the city over the past year as we look back. And it's a way for us to, sometimes we work so hard and focus on the future, we don't have a chance to pick it back and acknowledge the great work that actually has happened with staff. And we wanted to hear from all of you, where can all of you most start? So, we're going to spend maybe twenty minutes on that. We call it, the city council's greatest hits, right? Our next piece is to spend some time talking about resource allocation and conduct a little bit of a light SWOT analysis, but focusing more on challenges and weaknesses, or the challenges rather, and opportunities that we face. And then the bulk of our time today will be focused on conducting the prioritization exercise. So, you see the pushover behind you. We have a matrix on urgent, non-urgent, very important, important, less important, and not important for how the city's flow. So, we'll spend some time doing that. So, we'll go ahead and just get started and begin with an exercise. We've got a easel pad here and we'll spend maybe twenty minutes identifying what are the accomplishments in the city that resonate the most with you as our policy makers, as our council members. And we'll just write them here on the easel pad and gather your feedback. Who wants to pick us up?
So, there's so many, it's like thoughtful and then I'm trying to write them all down. Everything that the staff has done, you all are awesome. I talk about it all the time. I always do it at the stage and at the venue because of all the work that we do consciously and consistently. And so, I would say some of the biggest things I see is definitely the house now. I mean, my gosh, I mean, like we cannot forget all the hard work that was done out in there and going back and forth and working with community, with outreach, all of those pieces, outreach and all of that. And also the sports center and library comeback, how long's comeback? Because coming back from COVID and giving your big key community facilities that serve the community and so they've done really well in coming back with mobile unit, library and all sorts of things like that. Also, I would say fires and PD doing lots with, I mean, several things from not only dealing with the fires that helping other communities, but also keeping us safe and keeping us informed of what's going on. But also with PD and how they work with them, how they have the stuff we need and different things that they're doing. And then the technology that has been implemented with those, both PD and especially with PD, a lot of new technologies. And then there were some other things that I want to say. Those are roadworks, roadworks. Paying able to get all the money and getting that to be that, that was huge. Even though we've had our own health, I think that was huge to be able to meet that, to develop some sense.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Barber. We've got housing, you've hit on so many different areas of service delivery here, housing, sports center, library, fire, police, technology, M.T., work, ALPRs as an example, you mentioned with technology, group work. Councilmember Ash, yes?
Sure. I want to include the light coordination for traffic. I noticed a huge improvement in the traffic moving and the work that that senior engineers, the engineers do toward getting that all coordinated. I really noticed that. I noticed the quality of the Measure S project is, it's better, better than it has been since S and P have been in place, especially like the quality outside of the college, the community college. I, it's a great achievement that we're open on Mondays at the library. Huge improvement. I want to amend the community wildlife protection plan with the fire department, the J.D. Sheldon and Chief are putting together and the community action teams that the police department puts together. Quality people dealing with challenging people, challenging situations, and you handle it beautifully. And I'm always impressed with the police department doing that. And I want to also call out our commitment to our Zoom presentations and our openness to the public in forums like this is exceptional.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Ash, yes? I think I want to start with an experience and I'll share it with the public. So, a few months ago, I happened to be walking down over by the middle of President Street from the conference center. And I was, at that moment, I guess unfortunately I was there to experience what maybe some of us heard in the news when the pedestrian was hit and killed. And I happened to hear it and then see it. And it was a very traumatic experience for me, walking up to the scene. And what, afterwards, what I reflected on was that, I mean, very tragic situation. I heard the impact. I saw a woman get on the phone, my guess to call 911. And before she hung up, maybe two minutes later, we had our fire department right there on the spot. And I see our first firefighter jump out of his truck and I happened to know him, he happens to be one of my neighbors. But just knowing each other, I saw him, he saw me, but without hesitation, he just went and geared up and provided the aid. And that happened, I mean, it felt like within a couple of minutes of the impact. And that, to me, was a very powerful experience in a variety of ways, but shifting the intention to our first responders. You know, firefighters quickly were there at the moment and then, of course, PD made sure to secure that fire area. I was in shock and one of our officers came to me and said, please clear the area where it was, you know, where it needed to be done. And I appreciated that. So, all that, right, to share and say that. I think our fire department, our police department, I mean, your city very proud. I mean, top-of-the-line service that really being provided by both of our departments. And I want to acknowledge we are representatives here as well. And of course, with the fires going on now, so I guess we continue to see that effectively and that badly, probably into our city. So, I wanted to share that.
And thank you for sharing that story because sometimes we talk a lot about what we do, but just as important or more importantly is how we do it. And as a culture and as an organization, you know, it starts at the top. We are dedicated to providing that high-level quality service, not just showing up, but how we show up. So, thank you for that. You're just a fire.
Yeah, and I think that's really the approach also. And the other item that I want to share that, you know, I've had the pleasure of meeting new individuals, new families who move into the area. Get that reaction that their interactions with their neighbors, with anyone who's involved in local government or staff has been very welcome, right, and very helpful in their own settling into the city. So, I wanted to point that out. And there was one more point. Oh, yeah, so, and I think along with that, they feel very, very lucky and very fortunate and very happy to be moving into the area and they appreciate the care, right, for what they see in their own neighborhoods, whether that be landscape, whether that be cleanliness and that kind of thing. Sure, we have work to do, but I think also it's important to capture those moments, right, where we have individuals who really have very little experience with our city describing their, so far, their good experience with it and hopefully stay that way. So, I wanted also to touch on really quick, more specific, the District Four as well, just the improvements in the infrastructure, in and out accidents of Del Monte Beach and installation of radar signs, you know, careful maintenance of our parks and open spaces. I see a really quick, a real quick plug there. I see Anthony every morning go around in the car just doing an awesome job, making sure that it's clean there and presentable for families and kids. And I've been there with the group of parents because that happens to be a bus stop for one of the schools. So, and I see them every day just being dedicated. So, I just wanted to highlight this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me flush, but. There's a list, we'll see if I can add to it. So, I agree with everything that's been said. I wanted to touch on connection to measure S as a continuation, but it's not only just that the work isn't getting done, but we get a report that shows us the results of the tenant management index. So, we're seeing that tick up now. So, if anybody came in the middle of the measure P and we asked you to please consider a vote for that purple line, we were talking about low fifties index and saying, we have a problem, we need to address this today. It's eight, am I right? Eighty? We're getting eighty-one, we're getting one. That's stellar. That's not an A, B, C, D kind of a score. We want a very, very high score compared to our work. So, kudos to measure S, but the delivery of the services for the citizens and the visitors to the city overall, that's just one example of how it works. I'm privileged to have a small office where my regular job, I work from on Cali Prince's House. So, I frequently get people that just walk down the street and they stop. I don't mind, but in front of my office, this fantastic building was built in nineteen twenty-six. And they stop and they take pictures and I frequently open the door, they look through the window and they contact and they have a conversation with these folks that are passing by and out of the lawn, who is interested. The comments I hear are, what a beautiful city, what a wonderful city, and how fun they're having on their trip, whether it's staying, taking insights and taking care of it and appreciating the historical value of our city and taking the pictures. And frequently, these conversations come up to, you know, traffic, roadway, work, you know, water, all those other kinds of things. But I believe when you talk to people who are coming from other cities and the parks of the world, Monterey has a lot of positives that they see and I appreciate getting to hear it from them. And one of the things that I commonly told is, number one, put a great library. My grandson has a three-point eight because he studies and goes to library. So, the library is fantastic and people frequently tell me. For the greatest hits for this last year, the police department with this lesson play reading program, further than that, this ability of leadership that our chief and our staff members and all of our officers are able to contribute. And the ability to improve and retain is a direct correlation to how well-run a city is. And when people want to come to host our, to work, they do their homework. They look at what our score part is. I mean, I already know we're a city on the move, performing well. And so, we've been able to retain staff for them. In the fire department, I think we've used it, recognized it, people always return. We've seen significant stabilization with the fire department, with leadership. We've seen several promotions. We've seen a plethora of new equipment, activities. The fire mitigation project is just completed, we're going to hear more about January twenty, February, February twenty-seven, February twenty-seven. So, kudos to our chief, Miller, and staff and what they have done because there has been a tremendous uptick in morale, support under our our chief's leadership and the contribution of all of them, then with the fire department. So, I recognize that. I think that that's a great difference last year. The conference center has continued with success for bookings. And I don't want to leave out some of the obscure things that we don't see a lot of the progress, but the parks wreck, our parks are backwards in booking. We are so privileged to have the nominal parks. And I go to Dennis' Park pretty gratefully and they've got the greatest hamburger in the world at that snapshot. And I go by and I talk to, you know, Peter Junior, get the hamburger and I look in the parking lot. And it is a low-class location. People are drawn to it. It's maintenance is fantastic. Number one on my list of things that I'm most proud of is the recovery post-COVID, the stabilization of our economic recovery, the decisions that this council made. The stabilization of our economic recovery, the decisions that this council made, the staff has recommended. A lot of stuff the council doesn't come up with, but the city staff comes up with it. And to be able to recover post-COVID and to look at our books, the stability financially, uh, yeah, we have challenges, yes, we obviously want it. But when you look at the level of our reserve that's increased, uh, the Marina Fund, Islands Funds, uh, the reserve in the strike that's one twenty-five, and I always want to put a prop in front of it. So the one twenty-five fund?
One fifteen.
One, one?
Session one fifteen.
Session?
One fifteen.
One fifteen, and it's an IRS session, is that what it's from? So session one fifteen and being able to put the site on and to put money away in reserves. Um, I, I think that that's among the greatest things this council has been able to achieve this last year is the financial and economics stability and to not overspend and to not go crazy in, in terms of the funding sources we have and to overwork our work plan and outsource ourselves and, and give out over our sheets. I think that's the number one thing I can look at is that you're good at executing things because we have excellent staff. It is well-run, it has natural beauty, and we have a friendly community that I think a lot of people recognize. Um, I think we have a lot of connections here that I don't think, sometimes we appreciate the fact that we have a staff that knows how to work the network outside of the city. Our stakeholders, our community partners, our neighbors, our governmental neighbors from the north to the south of Monterey County, the business community, the non-governmental organizations, and the ability for our staff to, you, okay, uh, our ability for our staff to be able to make the connections, um, in times of need or in times of success. The network is deep and I value that because that means that we are not struggling to ask the neighbor, hey, how does this work for you? And we're also welcome to be able to share how it works from Monterey to help those other cities. Because we are successful with our neighbors in each city to the left and right and everywhere in Monterey County because we, we are not insulated and we have to make sure that we pay attention to the stakeholders uh, that are all over the place in the county of Monterey. And, uh, not to lose sight of the successes of our military systems working, our military bases are here. And I hear frequently from people, and there's a couple of members of our church that are here for the native postgraduate school time, and they love being here. They're already planning to come back here after they retire. But it's, um, the crown jewel to be able to say we have two military bases we have, that I think, I would say, the connections and relationships with the military bases today are not the same thing we had, uh, in the nineties or years ago. So the loss of those relationships, I think it's successful each and every year to say, well, we don't have a crack, we don't have a little closing, and we don't have a friendly to close. And that's because we have good relationships with, uh, do highly efficiently and considered valuable military relationships here. So lots of successes for this year. If I missed anybody, uh, I don't have any complaints about any of the departments.
That's going to draw them to. Because that's our end of this on record. Mr. Mayor?
Um, so I, I equally agree with all my colleagues. Um, I'm just going to try to run through some stuff real quick. Um, I want to, I want to reemphasize the housing element that Dr. Barber brought up. Um, uh, I, I think it's a, uh, it's written in the sense that we can have a role of three thousand six hundred forty-four units to plan to build a construction of the city of Monterey, um, to help not only house our, our workforce, um, but also take care of folks that are struggling to continue to live in Monterey that, that live here now. So I'm really excited about, um, us pushing forward hard on, on housing. Um, uh, the, the progress that we made on the Madison Bay area projects, uh, with Mid Penn Housing, the forty-one units of hundred percent affordable housing, uh, is a really exciting opportunity. Uh, I'm, I'm proud of the rental inventory program and I appreciate all the work and collaboration, uh, across city staff and, and, and the community on getting that, uh, up and running off the ground. And I look forward to continuing to refine that and make that better. Uh, also the rental assistance program, um, I think is a really great way, you know, I think we should ever take care of the most vulnerable folks in our community. Uh, we also made amendments to downtown specific plan to eliminate, you know, parking requirements to residential land use. So super proud of the city board, um, good to have. Uh, I'm going to switch topics and go to water. Uh, and, and by the way, this is a little bit of a, a, a tee-up for, um, some of what I'll, I'll share more at length during the state of city. So I tried to do quick highlights here, but, um, this stormwater diversion to sewer infrastructure project with Lake Elastero, connecting Lake Elastero to Monterey Water, which will provide, uh, an additional hundred to a hundred eighty-three degree year of water, uh, to the region, I think is a success. I reported that project initial construction, uh, by the end of next year. Uh, we supported the water management districts, um, proposed an allocation of a hundred forty-one acre feet of, of water to be allocated to the city of Monterey based off of the expansion project that will be completed in construction this fall. Uh, we also allocated ten thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, near Monterey River Waters Customer Assistance Program to help, again, the most vulnerable folks in our community to help pay for, uh, their, their bills, uh, when they're going into economic times. Uh, switching to economic development, um, the city council of the, the city led the way and by appropriating ten thousand dollars in Monterey County Business Council towards the establishment of the City of Business Development Center Satway Office, uh, in Monterey. Um, and it was because of Monterey and a lot of kudos to Hons in helping coordinate those efforts, um, that really allowed the other local jurisdictional businesses that have come in and joined in on that effort to make that happen. Um, the council, uh, also authorized for retail cannabis business permits. Uh, and just this past weekend, the first one will be done for business and, um, is starting to bring the city some revenue. So, um, I look forward to the outcome of that and see where that goes. Um, the city is currently going through the process of establishing a local road safety plan. Um, and it kind of just, you know, I, I still think of that as Gino was sharing his story. Uh, those, those, those types of stories are exactly what we're going to be implementing and, and looking at as we, um, roll up, roll out our local road safety plan, making sure that we can maintain a, a safe community for everybody. Uh, and I would argue Monterey is a great safe community as it is because of our public safety, uh, staff. Uh, but there's always room for improvements, I think this is a great space for that. Um, the city appropriated twenty-five thousand dollars to the Monterey Inflated Out Friendship Association when our sister city, Base Seven Point Six, kind of two virtually, um, in January, January first. Um, it was a devastating event, as you can imagine, for that community. And so for, for us to show that sign of support and really, um, I can provide that seed money to help encourage other folks in the community that also support, uh, is a great thing. Um, the council authorized the funding for the new library, the moving mobile. Um, and, and that's obviously, um, a, a cherished program for little ones and making sure that we can provide those services and feed them where they're at. Um, so just a lot of kudos to our, our library team for all the work they do there. Um, the council adopted a, a resolution ratified by the city managers, proclamation of a local urgency related to the February twenty-twenty-four storms. Um, if I recall correctly, that, correct or wrong, I think there was thirteen homes in the city of Monterey that, um, were damaged due to those storms. Um, and so just appreciating staff moving quickly. Um, and I think that's a, a highlight just of the city overall, not just of last year. But the city is quick to respond, um, to emergencies. And, and so we opened up the emergency operations center, um, and, and provided a, a swift response in regards to, um, the, the impact as it related to the, to the winter storms. Uh, the, the automatic license plate readers, um, you know, I, I obviously had, um, some concerns about it and, and we heard concerns from folks in the community as it relates to that. But I think it, it, our, our immediate support and getting that across the finish line from the council, um, is, is a testament to, uh, I think the, the, the need and desire for that in our community and the initial feedback that we've heard from the staff so far as it relates, this is success of that program is proving to show that we're, we're able to find justice in, in the crimes that are being committed in our city. Uh, the wildfire protection plan, uh, is a, a really great step for the, the city to take. And, uh, I look forward to continuing to push that down the field so that we can, um, make our city safer as it is to, uh, be more resistant to wildfires. Um, we increased our least water capacity fees, uh, which was given approximately an additional four hundred thousand dollars into that program. And that's going to be to make sure that we appreciate and take care of, um, the infrastructure that we are usually out of sight, out of mind, that we take, take for granted. Um, the Kai Prince of Pal Madison Oak Hard Island Ramps intersection, um, really excited to see that formulating. And, um, I really look forward to, um, um, seeing the sheros painted, uh, at that intersection for when that occurs, but really excited to see, um, staff just, um, taking the mobile and pointing and, um, really moving that, that project down the field. Um, and then the Monterey residents approve tournaments, uh, on the ballot in, in November and just, uh, give a lot of appreciation to the public for, for recognizing the need to make sure that we create voices, um, on the council and, and, um, make sure that we give that representation for everyone in our community. And so I'll, I'll wrap up my comments by just saying that, um, everybody on our city team, um, it, to me, this job is all about people. And, um, we have over eight hundred folks that work in the city of Monterey that are doing things that, um, most of us take for granted. Um, and so I really, really just, even from the bottom of my heart, just appreciating all of your, your teams, um, for, for what you all do for our community. Um, you all do have those job. And, um, and I mean, I could go on and on about all the work. I mean, even in Clementine, just executing the work as it relates to, um, the, the election process. Um, we're a full-service city. We have a lot of what we've done and obviously our community expects a lot of us. And so I'm proud of the team that we had here to rise to the occasion and, uh, make sure that we fulfill the, the needs that exist within our community. So, yeah, I'll wrap that up.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. For the entire council, for our members and staff, and also for the city, this exercise. You can, you can see the, the wide breadth of services that are supervised. And not only so, but, uh, but also what, hearing from each of you, what your greatest work or who we hope to us, covered everything from housing to sports, uh, center, lines of entertainment services side, all the safety aspects, infrastructure, technology, all the way to, uh, that's the most COVID recovery. Who, who would have thought we would have been able to get back to, to business so quickly after a such a devastating head to cities, coffers, and to our, uh, right, military partnerships, that kind of certain plan. All of these items, thank you for, thank you for taking the time to share this information with us. We're going to switch gears a little bit and, uh, and then talk about, a little bit about what are some of the, so all of you probably have heard of SWAT analysis. Right, what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats? Sometimes the word rest is changed out with challenges. So SWATs, uh, you know, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. We're going to focus actually on the last two. What are the opportunities that we have as a city to get things done, to, uh, to achieve your goals as our policymakers? And then what are some of the challenges that you see that we face? And we'll start with opportunities. What are some of the opportunities that you see us facing as a city, or that we should be managing with cities? And we're in, we're having a new, super easily used ad air and go to the next, uh, next one. So we'll start with anyone who wants to talk and we're right on top. So we're doing good on, on our schedule. But opportunities, let's start us off.
Um, man? Uh, so I, I'm going to categorize these and sometimes, uh, we have to define, uh, short-term, mid-term, or long-term. Yeah, so I'll, you know, throw some stuff up there and some people might say, what the heck are you talking about? How do you figure that? So keep in mind some of this stuff may be longer. And I want to preface this, uh, this first one because it's a big one. Uh, in nineteen thirty-nine, the master plan was completed not by this council. Many, 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 many councils ago, in nineteen thirty-nine, actually came up with a waterfront master plan. And that's the Wind by the Bay. Um, yeah, when I was a kid living here and starting to navigate my way around, we had a lot of the money that was not attractive, not business, didn't business friendly, not necessarily economically vital. And part of that master plan, uh, with from our previous council said, let's have a waterfront, uh, Wind by the Bay. And we started through those years, acquiring the property and cleaning up. And now we have what we have. We have a wonderful entrance to our city, wonderful park expansion and activities. So I, I want to think in terms of long, long, long term. I'm frankly a little worried about us developing a mentality of, we are just thirty-one thousand and this is what we'll be, and we're a small town and we don't think big. So this item for me is let's think big. I think we need to consider the activity and vibrancy of the waterfront and mainly the commercial work number two. We're currently doing a bunch of repairs and I think the city manager is going to talk to us later about more additional work that needs to be done. But I think we need to put a marker in our statement that says, we think it should become something different and bigger, long-term. I think it needs to be larger with a larger capacity for the large trucks for offloading. Uh, when squid hits and, and other, uh, products are coming in, uh, we are very small. It's very clunky and very clustered and very difficult for business and the fishermen and with waterfront enterprises, uh, to navigate that. Squid might not be here now, but it'll be back in the future. Salmon might not be here now, but it'll be back in the future. So I think you're, you're, if we don't look at that as a future enterprise, I think we should think about widening the warning. We should think about actually adding to the, um, breakwater that protects the water from surges. And also in years to come, think in terms of maybe we have an opportunity to expand the slips for additional boats on the east side of the water too. Uh, I'm told by some of the old-time fishermen that that was, one of the things was loosely talked about once upon a time was having an extended, uh, breakwater where they had more protection from the surges from the water, uh, and leaving that water too. And also I think we would have an opportunity to have more spaces to rent for, uh, recreational, uh, boating on the east side of the water too. And it's a big ask, it's a big take, it's very expensive, it's coastal commission, it's waterfront, it's, uh, Californian, how you do construction. But if we don't start dreaming about what the waterfront should be in years to come. And it, it might likely be many years past myself, but I think we need to maximize the ability to take care of the waterfront and that business connection to being a fishing enterprise and opportunity. So that's my big one that's long-term. I'm going to just rattle off some quick ones for time. Um, I, I think that, uh, we need to in the short term get to, uh, the former garbage building that's on Route One, I've heard about that frequently. I know staff has found out some ideas about how to express with that. But to me, that is, uh, very high priority. Uh, replacing the building with what, I don't know, but the empty garbage building needs to go. Uh, I'd like to see. Uh, I'd like to see community safety cameras talked about in the future. Uh, it's probably mid-range, but I think to augment the ability for modern technology to assist our public safety. I think uh, the community should be considering appropriately used and appropriately placed community safety cameras. That many, many communities currently have. When something happens, the ability for fast action because of those cameras is important. Uh, probably on the long term category is a public safety center. Uh, both the police department and the fire department, as you know, we have a nineteen fifty-nine built building. Both fire and police are outgrowing them. Uh, the buildings have been identified for the need of major work or complete renewal. And so putting that together with the possibility of looking at measure S. With measure S renewal of twenty twenty-seven, I think we should be talking about looking at long-term solutions. It's intended to work on our roadway, maintain the roadways. But there might be an opportunity to go to the community and ask the community to help us solve the public safety building with a combination of a new measure S that is actually expanded for sales tax. To be able to to look at the solutions for a public safety renewal building. And combining that with a uh, an ask for the community to extend the sales tax measure with a new measure that appropriately has a portion of money that continues to go to the roadways. And continues to uh, build the war chest that we're going to need for very expensive public safety. Uh, I'd like to see the completion of the deline tunnel outbound to Canyon Red, the city Monterey. For the adaptive signal line control plus uh, some of the selected intersections that need work. We need the new modern technology for signals. We need to have the adaptive signal line control that goes all the way to the center to the to the end of town. And uh, I think that's where we kind of have a long jam when it comes to traffic. We rule out, I mean, our lighthouse and if you get through the tunnel, then we still have the problems with Del Monte. And Elsero, Vito gets slow, turn pocket gets slow with the number one, I guess, number one different number accidents we have there. So we we have to identify problems along the way from the tunnel to the border. And I'd like to see uh, some specific plans of how we can bring that that region to a safer level for uh, committee. Community that commutes on that road. Downtown, I I think that our downtown looks um, outdated. It looks great for farmers markets, there's a lot of people there, but when it's a little empty, it looks a little bad. Uh, I'd like to to see what we can do to enhance uh, the improvement of the sidewalks. And the cleanliness uh, at the downtown area is a, it's always a struggle. And I don't think that we should continue to ignore that. I think we need to really pay attention to how our conference center areas, our downtown, the core of our town, the business community. Uh, where we expect it to um, chime and attract people. And if we want to continue to have downtown businesses, uh, we've heard some from some callers tonight, we hear frequently. I've got an office downtown, so I hear about it, I see it. But I think we need to set that priority to really find some new ways to pay attention. And I don't know if it's increasing funding to O M B A, if it's that we expand funding for for our own internal um, man heart that takes care of that. I don't know exactly what the solutions are, but I think we need more focus on the cleanliness, the garage downtown and uh, things that service the surrounding areas around our conference center. The conference center is the anchor for downtown. So it's to business, to offer business visualization, to bring people into town that are then supported by our local businesses. So I want to ensure we we take care of the building, the building with the sidewalks and the streets and pathways for people to navigate. They need to be cleaner. I want to continue to find ways that we are tied with uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, Business Council. I think those are all worthy relationships to have. I think that we need to champion of that a little bit more. I'm not sure a lot of folks know a lot of the great things that happen because we don't have a daily newspaper. So we have to figure out how we communicate with people in a different way. And I think the city staff does a great job with that. But I think there's some new age ways of doing that with our businesses where businesses and the folks that use our town actually get to hear all this good stuff that they may not see unless they dive into our website, our news links, our our Chamber of Commerce there. Because frankly, the old way, if there was a competitive newspaper, you got to lose. Well, we don't need that anymore. So I think we have to constantly find new ways to connect the business community with the city activities. And maybe the Business Council will have some great ideas to be able to uh, make those better connections. The broadcast, the great things that are happening, uh, and because we can't just rely on the community to do that for us. We have uh, the weekly is on Thursday, the Cardinal Hines comes on Friday and readership with those Monterey Herald is very loved. So there's a lot of people that don't use a smartphone and they're not getting it on a smartphone or text. They're not tied into the app. So we have to find a way that the rest of the community can hear about all of this. All of the there, right, or the opportunities I'm looking for, right?
Thanks, thanks for, Mr. Smith, and you have you have our job of being first out of the gate. And also, you know, you you mentioned a couple of things that I think are helpful. The context that you shared with us, what's long term in your mind is an opportunity, what are the midterm opportunities, what are the short term? Well, it's nice to provide some context and better understand where your priorities are and also that we're going to, it's important that we get to this exercise, what's urgent and what's not urgent, right? Some things may be very important, like commercial work too, but it may not be necessarily, you know, the number one urgent item that we need to get to. So that helps us with context. Um, you mentioned, you mentioned time, just want to be just a quick time check with everyone. Looking for maybe two to three minutes max per council member for a bit for our test, so we can make sure we get to the the core of our purpose today too. So thank you, Councilor Smith. I can see two hands up, but we're going to go first.
Okay, so because of that, I'm going to just rattle it off. Um, basically, uh, looking at our preparedness and evacuation. Um, because that is the driver called life transparent and includes the government and fiscal stewardship because of the money that are being um, served in the reserve and everything else. So um, outbring preparation drills with that. Um, water credits, being with the Bureau of Water Service and Paul Goodly there. Um, unhoused and affordable housing, we are a builder of affordable housing, Paul Goodly Life, Madison Street project and other opportunities. Like elaborations of local history and nonprofit, the rental assistance and landlord programs, the landlord working with the city to help with the policy there helping. Uh, center of city uh, relationship drivers, a deal with open exchange, offering more of these young babies, hydration, assuming the city's in the low. Economic partnership, opening doors for trades, tourism and business investment, shared best practices to be able to figure out different strategies for another city. Economic development, drivers develop and retain quality workforce, meaning to work with the Business Council, but also to work with impact. Uh, and and the Chamber of Commerce to be able to bring more into the city. Uh, I think I did about two or three minutes.
You did, you did great. Thank you so much. That's helpful. Let's let's send it over to Josh Cooper, R S E A.
Awesome, thank you. I'm going to jump right into economic development. Um, I think the city would benefit from having an actual economic developer um, to look at a at a variety of areas. Uh, and and I mean, a variety of, you know, uh, different things that impact our our city and I'll explain them a little bit. Um, to start, I think uh, economic development is important for North Fremont. Uh, our business district is um, dated, it's uh, it's got vacant lots. But it's also surrounded by uh, very specific uh, assets that have, I think, high potential. We're talking about airport, fairgrounds, beaches, parks. Um, so just in in that uh, in that same context, I think an economic developer could look at all of these districts. Um, and really activate many of the assets that we have. And and I think by bringing in a a specific person with a very specific skill set to do all that. That would be an investment to actually bring in a person with good skills and have the work that they do basically paid for their own position and then some. So I think we can uh, we can um, get a lot of benefit from from that specific position. Uh, and and in terms of the other areas that I was referring to, um, you know, at first, when I started thinking about economic uh, relevant. My my first way of seeing my business, right, I would be letting a person to re uh, activate businesses in our city. But that position could also be much more with housing, housing development, infrastructure development. So I I think there's plenty to look at there. Um, and and again, I think benefits for our city. Um, I want to uh, bring back Casanova Park Center. That conversation kind of got stale a little bit. Um, I know that there have been other options being looked at, but um, I think our our community is really, uh, there's a strong interest um, to do something with that site. Um, I mean, I I work with other jurisdictions that uh, struggled to get a site built and and then programmed, right? Uh, we have that uh, luxury now that we have already a center that's already built. And I think we have it in a neighborhood that could really benefit from from more consistent programming um, for all ages. So I want to bring that to the conversation back up. Uh, infrastructure, in in the past um, a couple of years, in in getting to know the the layout more intimately uh, of District Four. I have learned that there are very um, uh, uh, very, I think, areas that could be very well used uh, in our neighborhoods, specifically uh, talking about alleyways that for the most part tend to be forgotten because, for whatever reason. Um, and I've learned that there's some really nice um, alleyways in our district. And then I've learned that we also have throughout the city. I think it 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 could be a good opportunity to look at uh, those those areas, alleyways specifically as potential um, areas to improve for pedestrians, um, or for our vehicles. But um, you know, it's also kind of taking it along the uh, the lines of uh, of purifying, right? The the areas in our city. So wanted to share that. Um, one and such quickly, um, homelessness, I know that we had a struggle with retaining the homeless in that area. Um, and uh, I I think we, gratefully, we continue to look at that opportunity. Um, but we might actually have to, I think, rethink, right? How how better or or maybe an alternative to that? Because if you're having a challenge hiring somebody and retaining that that person with those specific skills. Uh, maybe there's uh, uh, an alternate uh, method that we should be looking at. So and and I think, you know, our interaction with um, other agencies, right? Critical in in trying to define, you know, what what is coming forward. Um, Alvarado Street, I I really like the idea that I heard earlier as well from a colleague comment about just researching uh, the the possibility of thinking of pedestrian only. Um, I know that would be a big shift, so um, just to consider it, just to look into it. What what could it bring to not only our businesses along Alvarado, but to our residents and our visitors? So I think that's a, that could be a pretty exciting um, item to look at. Um, I'm going to shift really quick to uh, the conversation that came up because of the fires um, that we've been hearing about. Um, my neighborhoods, my communities have been, uh, or rather the community where I live um, have really brought up, you know, a point about hydrants and maintenance um, of of those uh, of those items. So uh, and I think really the uh, the message has been more about um, how do we come up with a maybe more systematic way of ensuring that hydrants work, for example, right? So uh, but it doesn't have to end there, just a a more, um, I guess, uh, detailed uh, approach to ensuring that facilities that you would be in case of emergency are working there. Uh, not that they're not right now, but I like, I don't know. Um, and I think that's where I was thinking.
Well, the number one opportunity that I see after having campus District Three is to update the tree management ordinance and um, all things trees is what I call. Um, this was constantly talked about to me. Um, this was constantly uh talked about to me. Otherwise, not. So um the reason I am so um so committed to strengthening our neighborhood association and expecting them is its safety and welfare. They are our number one resource in times of need to support each other and I and I really, that's why I'm here. The safety that residents bring to the town. Um, I would like to see a completion of the Skyline Road Route Sixty-Eight um Coalition for Safety. But um that was to have been agendized by uh started by uh Councilmember Hoppa, and we need to finish that. That process of agendizing it and talking about whether studying would be appropriate. Um, I totally support uh Mayo um Murder, Murder, No God on agenda that I'm agendaizing a uh a no smoking policy in multi-unit housing. I think that's um health and safety and if we can't take care of the health of our residents, what are we doing? So I think that's critically important, and when she brought it up last time, this time, I support them. Um, we need workforce rental housing, completion of the Colton Project, a great opportunity. And to continue to identify projects and and allocate our water resources to those projects. Uh homelessness, um and that ties in with downtown too. Um, we we need temporary shelters. So that we can, in main fashion, we have an opportunity, and the Supreme Court said we we can that that disbanding encampments is not solely a municipal accomplishment. Has to be done in a in a morally appropriate way. And so we need we need a temporary shelter list. And again, I was down um downtown Southern California, and I visited the Alphina um the um Center for the Firefighters, and they have these mobile units. Um, wanna talk to Chief Williams about it. And you know, they 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 house the firefighters in these mobile units, and I think, why can't we get a shelter? So that we can, we have a place to disband our homeless people while we are helping them with permanent housing and opportunities. Um, co-compliance is a big issue for my people, and I would love to see a um an agendizing of co-compliance. Um, people are frustrated that that on cars and the tar and the front lawns and everything. So I would like to address that. Um, I'm concerned concerned about youth and families, and somehow we need to address this. Um, I have a um a teenager in my life locally, and so I'm kind of aware of these issues. We we really perhaps long-term a partnership within USD, somehow addressing the opioid problem, somehow the struggles these teenagers are real, maybe they're from COVID, um but um they need help. I'll just leave it at that. I see an opportunity to um broaden um our outreach for our city council issues by possibly a Spanish interpreter that the supervisor do. I understand from my media expert that I need for my election that it's not updating best, and I wonder if we shouldn't start that. Totally resonate with the suggestions for Alvarado. We should look at what Boulder did when they made their downtown a pedestrian only. We've got to support our businesses downtown. The the speaker online uh has a very valid point. Got to bring, support the economy of the downtown. We need to clean it up. That was my big complaint. It's like, I mean, this we need to clear, we need to refresh it, we need to support the businesses. And he and and he calls our community lack. So where there are encampments, you gotta keep the beach coming. That that is our our asset, and it's our income builder, is that beach and that whole walk to downtown. And then we need a um, we have a great opportunity to have a a community-wide discussion on measure, continuity measure S with a combination of roads, um infrastructure. I dig one's policy to put the utility lines down in some kind of a managed managed fashion. And we need the um converging committee established so that we can follow the PG need requirements for the for the new um Rule Twenty-One uh A, well, it's it'll be B, Rule Twenty-One issuance of fair procedures, which require a um citywide committee. So that's all.
That's all. That's all.
I bet you all have to be, oh, I don't know. I don't know.
Add a list, let's make sure that, yeah, to to the agenda if we can.
Yep. So um housing, we need to uh fully implement the housing elements, and and I'm gonna add my point here uh to our housing uh our planning department. Yeah, we need to stay flexible and evolve to the needs of folks that are wanting to develop in our town. So if it's not included in our housing element, we should, their their first answer shouldn't be no. It should be, it should seem like a reasonable project, and let's look at how we can incorporate those policy changes within the city. Um, next step for renters, um in fact, this is the last council meeting, so I I won't go too far into that. But I think that there needs to be some more work. I know there are a bunch of things that just arose was um strengthening of just cause convictions. Um, I'm I'm hoping that we can bring back that Adam Street project uh which could provide another opportunity for a a hundred percent affordable housing project. Um, I also want to touch on on homelessness. I know that um something that should be coming in front of the council at some point regarding uh the Supreme Court's decision on the Boise case. Uh, uh as far as encampments, and I asked the police chief to include in that discussion um some proposals that we can use to advocate to our state federal legislators. Uh, because as I understand it, our police department is doing everything they can, where they can and when they can. Uh, but there's just a lot of restrictions as it relates to what we can do. Um, and I think there's a a a misperception regards to um the reality of that. So I I think having some opportunities to to use some advocacy there, I think will be tremendously helpful. Um, and just looking at the issue overall, I mean, a couple of my colleagues have run it up. I think it would be helpful to be just even have a study session on this topic and figure out how we proceed. Um, allocation of water credits. So we, so the Water Management District has allocated those water credits to us, so I think it's a high priority for us to figure out as a council how we wanna distribute those water credits if and when they become available, so that we're not waiting to the last minute. We're getting around to it as soon as that water, the waters in the pipes, we can move forward. Um, I'm gonna switch to climate, um climate action related things. So I know that part of our updates to housing element is the kind, the updated climate action plan. So we hope that we do a good job at um G and B engagement on that and um think bold in regards to what we can do from municipal levels and um and incorporate um actions that our local residents can take. So that it can kind of provide some kind of guideline that we can all use to make our city more climate-friendly. Um, natural disaster response for all the same reasons that my colleagues have identified. Um, I would love to host a town hall or some type of event on all things related to trees, defensible spaces. Uh, discussion around eating shards being dropped. Uh, that's a huge issue affecting a lot of our residents. And so um how much we can do at a local level, I don't know. But again, this might be an area where we can have some policy uh initiatives that we can use to advocate to our state federal legislators. Uh, this um pedestrian cycle friendly city. Um, um, I I like, as as many of you know, and um a lot of people think that we are a bike-friendly community because we have a rec trail. And that's not true. It it, most people, when they're commuting around town, do not jump on the rec trail to get from one place to the other. So we need to think uh formally around how do we make our community more bike, pedestrian friendly? It goes into this whole conversation that council's been having a lot about um repairing our um sidewalk infrastructure as well. So there's a lot to to be said around uh how to make our community more bike, pedestrian friendly. Um, I I share the sentiment by what what sounds to be a majority of my colleagues around um making them around a street pedestrian only. Um, there could be an opportunity where we test it out over a basic period of time and not make it a permanently to see how it works for our community, because I know there's a lot of folks that are concerned around um the complexity of that and not panning it out for certain communities. So um uh ban smoking in multifamily residential, I I jump on that vein line. I think we should definitely address that. It seems like low hanging fruit, not much uh pepper probably needs to go into that, since there's a lot of jurisdiction that according to what I say, we're not reinventing the middle there. So I think we should get that across the finish line. Um, paying for deferred maintenance. So jumping off the climate topic to to say that I think probably one of the most important things that I hope that this council can achieve over the next two years is figuring out a plan about how we're gonna pay for all of this uh deferred maintenance. This isn't even about the money right now, but what is the plan that we, what is the vision that we have around how we're gonna address this nearly three hundred million dollar um hole that we have in regards to CIP projects, our infrastructure, all of it. Um, I I think it would be great for us to have that vision and you move ahead of the future for success. Um, Measure P, Measure S, I I agree with uh Gene uh with a dig one's policy. I know that this has been floated around before, um and I think we can dig deeper uh on it, uh around what that looks like moving forward. Um, and I think including infrastructure and measure, the extension of measure being measure S is uh a beneficial. But moving on to governance, um um, I I'd like to see us um look at implementing um term limits for our boards, commissioning committee members, similarly to how we saw for the council. Um, I'd like to advance relations with the NCIP. Um, uh uh now knowing I'm the NCIP rep, I I've been attending the meetings and will continue to attend um the meetings to try and help foster that. But I think that the council collectively needs to do some more work in regards to helping to um build that relationship stronger. Uh, election signage policy. Um, there's a question around big signs being split into little signs, and then signs made on rental properties. So I I'd love to dig in deeper there and and look at potential for a policy implementation as it relates to election signage. Um, a volunteer program, I'd love to just need to um do investment in all of our departments around uh uh getting more volunteers to help support the work that we're doing, but also creating opportunities, particularly for young folks, but also for seniors um that will have some time, that wanna help, that wanna maybe take a shit on, you know, picking up the trash, you know, taking the trash out of the park. And and I think we can use our community better, so we can all work together towards supporting, taking care of our community. So I really um have a a vision of of amplifying the volunteer program, and I am gonna go a little bit further here to say that I know that part of the concern is volunteers are gonna have, if they are volunteering in the city, they'll have to take mandatory trainings. So I think there's a way that we can work through that, or maybe we set up an annual events where they meet in the space, and they don't have to do some kind of training online where they can get the presentation, do the training, and then go out there and try to work for our community. So um, community engagement and outreach, I mean, I spoke to this a little bit. I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to continue to dig deep there. This isn't just town hall, the great work that we've done. I think we have done the best ever at outreach to our community, surveys, uh feedback, town town halls. Um, I think there, it can be more strategic to think about who are we trying to reach that we're not already reaching. Um, Hans and I have a little bit of this conversation earlier this week. Um, young folks are are just not something, I mean, just look at the room. There's there's a child in the room, I don't know how old she is, but and I don't know how much she's paying attention to what I've been saying right now, right? Like, so, but it it it, I remember once giving a presentation um when I was a council member, this is a couple of years ago, and even the statistic was thirty-four, I think, was the number percent of folks that lived in the city of Monterey are millennials. That's not including Z ears. I mean, there's a huge portion of our city that's just not present. And and we need to make sure that we're figuring out how we can reach those folks. So is it radio, what is it? What are those spaces that they're, that in the media that they're listening to, that we can find a way of digging deeper there? I think another big way is just building relationships with organizations that are in the community that focus on us. Economic Development Director, I I echo, um, I think a couple of my colleagues actually brought up um this conversation on economic development, but I agree with Gino. And getting an economic developer, I think, is key for somebody to focus on that relationship with our business community, because their success is our success. I think in a large way, high on that list, whether we'll get to this later, assuming we get an economic developer, um is figuring out um the revitalization of North Remont. Um, and then the last thing to get to is labor. Um, uh so there's two things that I I I'd ask the council to consider. First is a private labor agreement. Um, and then and the second is a living wage ordinance. I'm I'm not saying we need to do both, but I I I'm interested in getting some more information about those and looking at where the opportunities are to make sure that we're taking care of our workforce. Um, and making it more resilient and uh and helping to create more community. So.
Fantastic. We've got a very solid list of opportunities that that you all see for us moving to the future. So that's the end of the slide analysis, right? And the uh the second piece is what are some of the challenges for us to be able to get with with these opportunities? Many of the opportunities that were listed by the council are ones that are on top of items in the city staff work program. And as you may recall, we're uh smart when we talk about the city staff work program. The in many departments, and I'll I'll point to your typical, our previous director as as one example. When you you see the all the things that you're all proud of, right, twenty twenty-four housing elements uh for for that department. Um, the uh other rental assistance program, rental tenancy, the relocation of of uh planning numbers. Those aren't actually part of the majority of what planning and building and per department takes care of. They take care of the the day-to-day, the whole of the work that 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 takes place. So there's limitations in terms of what we can do to get this done, as well as opportunities. So what are the challenges that we face to be able to 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 complete these projects? As an example, or these policy issues, or move forward in a way that's that's productive? So because later on, this will take, we can take this back and and see how we have to address those challenges. So what are those challenges? What are those threats? I mean, I'm gonna ask council, because I'm running short of time. For our council members, if we can all try to wrap up a little bit. So and I know we have some activity to do. So I'm gonna ask each council member to take no more than a minute to share your challenges to the next element. So I'm gonna do a timer. And um, what are what are the challenges? Uh, what are the challenges, what are the things we've offered? The the general, that's easier, we saw. The the more money, right? What are the challenges that we have to be able to get this done? And to move forward with some of the opportunities that you all have. Who wants to start us off?
Uh, so so I think uh general and short, um, I don't know what the challenges are. Because there are a lot of things here that are globally uh not desirable. I mean, the current conditions, because we don't yet have water. So if we do have water, that will change. But I think the number one challenge is work capacity. For the city manager to be able to pull together his workforce and say, stop doing what you were doing. Now we're going to do this different thing. And so to have the capacity internally to be able to do that. So part of it is shifting time as the money most starts to return, re- reestablishes new priorities. Uh, so the other, the other limitation is obviously uh water, money, labor capacity. And the other thing is, we've thrown a bunch of stuff on here, and all to say, okay, money was waterfront master plan and expansion and thirty, forty years down the road, many might say, no, BS, don't buy it, or never gonna buy it. And so so that that is the community, we need to support it. If community engagement is support, it would support the ideas we come up with.
Thanks, that's a great summary. There. All right, Dr. Barber.
Okay, so um not very repetitive, but the food already name of the nine in the water, money, of course, it's already there. Time to deal with how bad it be unexpected prices. They come up like the wildfires and COVID and things like that come up. And then, of course, um deferred maintenance too, that that even the mayor is talking about. Those actually become challenges as well, where they they
There you go. You take less than thirty seconds. Um, all right, who wants to go next?
I'm in.
All right.
Well, they've all been said. My workforce, um, community, community outreach will have to be done in order to get the right answers that people want. And again, I'm I'm back to communities, neighborhood associations, outreach, respect for residents. If we if we don't find out how how they value a potential answer and and how to build the answer, we won't come up with with the right action. So in community engagement is incredibly important, all of these. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Gee, um, I I think I'm gonna offer a little bit of a different perspective here. So for example, work capacity. I think it's pretty reasonable to assume that that can be a challenge. But at the end of the day, that's an assumption. So on my part, right? So I think um for me, it would be uh more educational to understand from staff what are those challenges? Because I I don't do the day-to-day. I don't do the the long-term and the short-term planning, right? I I don't understand what that takes, right? Because I I'm not in your in your position. So for me, I think it would be um, you know, again, more educational to understand that from from your perspective.
And that's her, right? That's uh any any other comments? I think we've all answered all. So these are some of the challenges we talked about, great opportunities, economic development. You know, homelessness, activating alleyways, neighbor lives, everything from Spanish learners to climate action. Lots of emphasis on economic development here. Being vague, if you want term, that's an important piece. And then, you know, rental inventory, water credits, disaster preparedness, market ships. And then the challenges that, that we have sometimes, you know, that we may, may have, we may assumption here, staff will be having to share, you know, some of the challenges. Work capacity, dollars. Community engagement. If we don't have the community engagement and support, we don't have the money or the staffing resources to, to do the work, the work doesn't get done. And to, uh, a point that was made earlier, if shifting time and priorities. If you only have one staff member, you know, let's say we have five staff members in parks, you know, but let's say you have, you know, five in parks and the intent is to do more. The question is, well, how do you shift that? Then are we, is everybody on board with shifting those, those allocated resources, right? Is everybody okay with having a lower level of service in certain areas to, to focus on our priorities and what's, what's the cause of effect of that? So those are some of the challenges, those are the challenges and to Garcia's point, it's helpful for us to have that conversation with the staff on what those challenges are. It's helpful also to hear the group feedback on it as well.
Matt, if I could just be curious to that real quick and, and we don't have to figure this out today, but one thing that we may want to think about is, I, I think we can do a better job of looping the council in when there are moments of pressure like that, right? Because there are things that come up, uh, that are unexpected or there's a shift in priority, maybe somebody on the council puts something on the agenda and wants to re-prioritize things. We need to have that conversation with staff in a public setting so that we can have, we need a little bit more transparency around that need to shift into what timeframes look like. So I've just gotta offer, I don't know if it needs to be something that's permanently on the agenda, if they don't need to do anything, we just pass through that or if we just analyze it as needed. Hopeful, hopeful feedback and plans to have that to communication loop.
So we, we brought an exercise for all of you. Uh, what we've done is we've done our, our best job to take all of the various areas of service delivery and categorize them into fifteen different areas. So fifteen different categories. One first category, community engagement and government transparency. We have community planning, so sustainability and planning. Community services, library is, is one. Community services, museums and lower residential storage park. Community services, recreation, wellness and sports programs. Another one is fiscal stewardship, economic development. Another one, fiscal stewardship, stabilizing future revenue sources. We have another category here, housing, affordable housing and securing water sources. Next category, housing, homelessness services. Another category is on infrastructure, building new infrastructure or expanding existing infrastructure. The next one, infrastructure, maintaining, preparing and replacing existing infrastructure. The next category is public safety, police, fire, emergency management, code of vice. Quality workforce, attraction and retention. Community partnerships and legislative advocacy. And then last but not least, in this tall category, um, infrastructure, active mobility and accessibility. So these are fifteen different categories and we made, you know, we did our best probably hit the ninety percent mark in terms of covering various areas of service delivery. And what we're gonna ask you to do is probably a very challenging, it's a challenging task, is to put up here on the butcher paper, so as you look up here and you look at, you know, what we have as what's very important, what's important, what's less important and what's maybe not that important. If you say not important, it necessarily means not important, it means not essential. Right? Like, let's just say, you know, increase air service development. Not, not saying that's not important to our community, but maybe it's not essential because you have an airport district that operates independently of the city, for reasons, it's a role, so. So the idea behind this is to identify not only what in your mind is very important, important, less important or not important. So that mean, you have to gather your feedback and your thoughts on how to prioritize the work that we do, or at least just have a better understanding of your perspectives as our officials. But also identify what's urgent and not urgent. So some of the things Castleman Smith mentioned, for example, the work two. You know, that's a long-term project, maybe it doesn't need to be done in the next one or two months, but to Castleman Smith, it's still important, but maybe less urgent, right? We all have those, those challenges in our personal day-to-day lives that, that we, we have to manage our own budgets personally. You know, when we have a car repair and our car got broken down and we can't get to work, that's probably more on the urgent side than regularly floors in your, you know, in your house, you know, I recently went through, uh, if we did our floors ourselves, didn't hire a contractor, it was only times important to us, but definitely not urgent, and it took us about two years to split the the floors and then, and then it took us, you know, three months to, to build them ourselves. So that's just one example, right? How, how do we prioritize in our personal, uh, lives? We're gonna ask you to do that from the city's perspective. Each of you have pre-vented index cards identifying each of these areas, priority areas. So yeah, community engagement, government transparency, community services. We're asking you to use Scotch tape, but this one's for you, because this one is for you. Dr. Barber, here you go. Just right there. So we're not writing, you're not writing, you're actually gonna use Scotch tape. And you're going to put these on the butcher paper and try to map them out. Recognize, this is a statra, right? This is a statra of various areas of work. I'm trying to tell you that if something's not important or important, it's just helping prioritize. But first, before you start taking, before you start taking, we're asking you to set just five minutes to actually put it in a rank order. If you were to have fours ranked, these priorities based on your own, your own thoughts, sort them based on your work. What you think is number one, what you think is number fifteen? So take a few minutes to sort them first. And then we're asking you to write down one through fifteen on the upper right-hand corner. Where are you, how you prioritize that, so that we know, and we remember too, which color cards you gave each of you. And then, once you're done prioritizing, well then, take a, what's with the index board? And then, and then put them up now. Each of you have five blank cards, let me, or hang on, those. And tell them for a real quick, just let all of you know, all of you have five. Yeah, you can't just, uh, stick it on one another, right?
Okay.
So we're subjecting.
Blue.
We're done.
And then you're gonna write my priority down. But I will ask, so extra blank five cards that you all have. If there's something that we missed, feel free to use the large, charmy marker and write it down on a blank card and then piece it up. So you get a, if there's something that you missed, okay? Does everyone understand the exercise and the assignment? Okay, excellent.
These ways.
I didn't like, even a lot of what I thought I'd heard about her teacher. Please sit down. My dad told me he was wrong. I'm gonna be the one to say, I'm sorry. During that, I always thought I had to, you know. We started this at all the time, if you don't have to. I must have always gone, I'm gonna get out my products to you. But, you said, oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I had a, you know. Or, yeah. We got a lot of people, very, very, very. These are, that's, 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 that's. She had a, you know, her body is.
But it means everything.
I was very, very, you know, my rote looks not like, I'm, I was good on the person, so I would expect. Bring out, let's, you know, why, you know, I'm. Last, first thing, you start, I don't see, I don't, I don't, I don't.
The last thing, you're still, you're only this for like ten years. Trying to sell a lot.
So he said, it's, it's, it's. What I'm turning down.
So it's how it happened, then we're starting our, so we have, so. Thank you. The people, you think, so they think about where the cities are. And is that near to the one they're talking about? Some have slightly. Yeah, well, I think, I think. Anyway, my office has. They look serious. I don't think so, you're like looking and. Then I decided. Starting from the base, much more, I was like, yeah, I'm down with it, like, what are you? I was like, that, I might just. Yeah. John Barnes. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, no. So. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, but you don't. They all want to measure. Well, I'd like to let you ask. I mean, after a while. I'm trying, I appreciate. I appreciate. Anyway, it's up here. It's not, I'm adorable. Yeah. Well, I was like, you know, my. Yeah. Our little future and then. That is one thing. Well, I don't know. I'm going down there. See, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not having the last. Um, are you? Yes. Right. So we're checking. I'm here, all the, um, so I'll. There we are. Yeah. Sorry, let's go ahead and get, uh, something down here. Let's go, we gotta get home. Okay, so I'm gonna pass it to Nat to, uh, to overview, okay? Fantastic. All right, thanks everyone for, uh, for your issues and to work out what, uh, what an exercise, right? That was probably not an easy exercise. I was very telling you when I come from, you know, you said you started taking the stack with the T part of the statement here. I've heard it in the target work. And I thought it's time to summarize this. Uh, and again, this is a reminder, this is a lot. It's a spectrum, doesn't mean anything, you never read that unlined or defined in certain areas, yes or not, right? And it's no plus that uh, hit to, uh, to, it's all, understand each of your perspective, what is most important to you? Not only in terms of prioritizing one through fifteen, force writing these categories, but also mapping them out along the spectrum. So, uh, here, Councilor Nash, uh, focuses on government transparency, number one, public safety, but let's go by the projects, right? Uh, here, urgent, very important, we've got community engagement, government transparency, public safety, underground access, and then we're, we're reading. Uh, housing, homelessness services, infrastructure, maintaining, repairing and replacing. Also, this is very important, also urgent quadrant. You know, we got public safety listed, uh, infrastructure, physical stewardship, housing. Securing water sources. Separate from, uh, affordable housing is a fourteen A, Councilor Smith put that on there, community engagement. Economic development, government transparency, housing, housing, housing listed again, attracting quality workforce. Right? To get a lot of stuff done is you gotta have a a, a strong workforce that's up here in this quadrant. Physical stewardship, quality workforce, public safety, community engagement, and then uh, on on the spectrum here, we've got physical stewardship, housing, public safety, engagement, partnerships. Physical stewardship and quality workforce. On, as we move here, we've got other uh, topics, physical stewardship, infrastructure, community services. More infrastructure is important, community services, library, community planning. Active mobility and accessibility of a library. Legislative advocacy, sustainability, uh, physical stewardship, again, public safety, a lot of these in the urgent category, also very important, and then, um, and then, uh, important, obviously, another year, less important. I'm glad you've got some underrepresented. Obviously, we're really on a wish. You know, it's understanding what we're, can we relate to this very stuff? And then not urgent, we've got like housing, uh, affordable, uh, affordable housing, maybe something that should be worked on more long-term. Physical stewardship. Maybe the perspective wasn't really our, this is a strong city, etc. It's not as urgent, it's something that's still very, very important. Community services, recreation, wellness, sports programs. Um, also, the important category here, perhaps not as urgent, some, you know, efforts we're maintaining, uh, is museums, community partnerships, ledge advocacy, uh, new infrastructure is listed here as not as urgent. Uh, we have, um, again, new infrastructure, not as urgent. The community services, uh, recreation, wellness, sports programs, uh, library, museums. We got a library here as well, recreation, we've got sustainability and planning, um, also here. Uh, mobility and, uh, accessibility also part of, uh, this, this, uh, important but, uh, not as urgent. And then on the less important side, a couple of categories. Uh, we've got museums listed, uh, free, uh, in free instances here, homeless services listed. Uh, along with active, uh, mobility and and affordable housing. Uh, and the reason that's big is maybe even is not as much of a city's role, so. Those are, this is the summary. I mean, encourage all of you, if you have a few minutes, when we adjourn, we will take these up. Um, take these down rather, maybe five minutes after we adjourn, if you're interested in looking at these, we're gonna actually map them out, put them into a document and you can all see. But, you know, as as you know, in the council, uh, when there is not easy to prioritize all the various areas of service to their rate. You know, putting it on the spectrum is hard, but also, force writing, I'm sure it was was very difficult. That's one of the challenges that we have with limited resources, limited budgets. We wanna get to new opportunities, we wanna get to new projects, but we have resource limitation, this not says prioritize. Helps us identify what is most important to all of you, so that we can budget appropriately, we can prioritize and that we can move move forward in a productive way. So, um, let's just go round of applause to Councilor for.
Yeah, this is.
Well, would you like to succeed, like, are there any commonality?
Hmm, yes, yes, and we 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 can certainly do that. I mean, there's some.
Public safety, public safety.
Like, I like to see them.
Well, and I'm assuming it sounds good, uh, everything together, nice, you know, for us, it's a little bit easier to digest.
Yes, it will be, what we did back in twenty nineteen, we actually did a very similar exercise back in twenty nineteen, right, over at the conference center. And we only had four projects. We had important, not important, urgent, not urgent. We didn't send it to the spectrum because it's more than just four boxes. It's it's a, it's four categories. For us, we're going to actually categorize this, so we know, okay, how many times did Councilor say that, uh, public safety is very important and urgent compared to less important and not urgent, right? So, uh, we'll, we'll take this and put it into a nice spreadsheet for all of you to view and go from there, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so because we're we're short on time, um, why don't we give Nat a round of applause? We can do that, I mean, there's many different ways that you can do this. Um, so I look forward to the follow-up discussion and us being able to kind of visually see this this information in no more digestible way. Um, so thank you to my colleagues for taking the time to participate in this exercise. I look forward to the discussions and all the work that we're gonna continue to do. Thank you to our entire city team for all the work that you do. I just want, yeah, so let's get going. Yeah, this is what I'm excited, this is a hard, I mean, I've been having, this is a hard exercise. You have to prioritize by ranking and then try to put it in quadrants and you don't want to put, I mean, you do, you want to put them all in very important and urgent, but you also wanna be fair and and try to spread them out a little bit, so. Don't take offense, please. Because really, uh, this this is all important stuff and, um, and it improves it, the work that you all do. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and close this out and, uh, we'll pick it up on the next time. Thank you, everybody. May you enjoy it. Thank you.